Response and recovery. We pause now to remember the lives lost and fractured and the families and community that have been so adversely affected. Please join me in a moment of silence. So I need a motion to establish the study session this evening immediately following this meeting. So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor of the study session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
All in favor of approving the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Moving on to recognition of students, staff, and public. First up, I would like to welcome Oak Grove Middle School and I think Brian Blessing. Are you here?
I'm here. You know, I have brought in a few animals with me, so I'll welcome them into the courtroom.
We had a dog a couple of weeks ago.
I think better than that.
I might have to get a picture, too.
There'd be dogs in Oak Grove.
We're so excited to be here tonight with you and to get ready for our show of Madagascar. And we have, along with this tonight, we have Judy Cooper on the piano. And I'm Brian Blessing. I teach music here at Oak Grove. And Kevin Dohany in our giraffe today. There's Kevin. Kevin, our costumer and co-director with me this year, and then a lot of our, a smattering of our students. We have just over 80 students involved in the musical this year, which is so exciting. And so when this show became available, we were excited to become part of it. And Kevin started making costumes last April to be able to have them all ready in time. Last year with doing Hairspray, you know, we had gotten some great media coverage with a lot of the costumes and music and things. And, you know, had an article on BuzzFeed that was viewed over 200,000 times, our video there, and then along with local media with Fox 9 and with Twin Cities Live and the Jason Matheson Show. So we're very excited about that and continuing that tradition. And so we want to show some of our, some of the costumes and puppets tonight that some of the students have. Bird, zebra, lion, lemur, fusa. And you can come see all of these kids sing and dance and share this great story, this great children's story, next week on Wednesday, March 7th at 10:00. And then Thursday and Friday, March 8th and 9th at 7:00 PM. And then we'll do two shows on Saturday, March 10th at 3:00 and at 7:00 o'clock. And so this is a great community event. You know, we had about just close to 3,000 people there last year. We're hoping to continue that tradition. So we're going to have our zebra and our lion, Marty and Alex, share just a little song about being best friends. Come on up.
The wild, we can be back by morning. What do you say?
You know what I say, Marty? Ain't nothing in the world that could tear us apart.
Don't do that.
You're my friend. Ain't nothing in the universe that could come in between us. If you're in a rut, I will pick you up and bring you back to who you are. Yeah, come on, Marty. Anything that you need, I'm here for you. Wherever I need to be, I'm there for you. Unconditional, even if it ain't cool. I'm there when you need me. Need a shoulder to cry on, it's here for you. Need a friend to rely on, I'm there for you. Unconditional. I know you know you're my buddy. And you're my bestest friend.
Would you fools be quiet, please? You're all nocturnal, you need to sleep.
All right. Hi, I'm Sophia Asme. I am in 7th grade and I play Marty the zebra.
My name is Ryan. I'm in 8th grade and I play Alex the lion.
My name is Kayla Garrett and I'm in 6th grade and I play a tropical bird.
My name is Bella Thurston. I'm in 7th grade and I actually play a tropical bird.
Hi, my name's Ayanna Eddy and I play a lemur and the old lady.
Hi, I'm Marcus. I'm in 7th grade and I play Mason, the British sarcastic monkey.
So we hope you can join us at any of those dates next week, and we look forward to another very successful community event here at Oak Grove Middle School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will not be at a mull time. We actually have a student that does the giraffe, but he wasn't able to come tonight, so. And the entire giraffe only weighs six pounds. So it was constructed so that a student could have it on its shoulders for the whole performance and not get tired.
Everything's been very carefully thought out as far as the Kevin relief.
Your giraffe trivia for this evening.
That's right.
And I asked Deb to bring a shovel because you never do.
Yes, everything's been fast advice.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Box City Vigil. We have two students, I think, that are here. Brianna Smokovich and Diego Price. If you guys want to come up to the podium, thank you.
Well, that's going to be a tough act to follow. So we're here with Box City Vigil. And so a little background is it was founded at Kennedy in 2009. It was created by students to try and raise awareness for homeless youth. And it was quickly integrated with the Jefferson community. The first couple of years it was done at the Capitol at St. Paul, but it was moved to the Oak Grove Presbyterian Church just due to the distance and kind of hassle of getting It was founded because homelessness is a big problem within our community and within the Twin Cities area. In 2017, homeless rates rose 4.6%. Nearly 7,700 Minnesotans are without homes in our community. 3,800 of those people are families and 900, about 900 of those kids don't have any family with them. Oasis for Youth was founded in 2010. It started with only 90 visits that year. Only four years later, it had almost 1,500 visits. By 2015, it was serving over 215 youth with almost, with over 2,000 visits that year. We have flyers for the vigil if you would like to see them. And what we are asking of the school board is simply that as students of Jefferson, Kennedy, we want this Box City Vigil to be exceptional this year. And we would like you guys to help support and promote us to people you know and spread the word of the event. We would like, we would appreciate if you would help fund and advocate to legislatures and for more funding and housing that will help homeless youth. And with everyone's help, we can bring homelessness to the attention of the public and the trouble that it affects so many kids within our community. Thank you.
Can I ask a question real quick before you go? Diego, you said it went up, homelessness went up 4.6%. Is that just Minnesota or is that nationwide? Just in Minnesota? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just want to reiterate the dates and the times. For those watching at home, it's Friday, May 4th, starts at 6:00 PM, goes to Saturday, May 5th, stops at 7:00 AM. So it is an all-night event. And again, it's at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church in the parking lot. If you don't see it, you'll hear it. And so just follow your ears. It's a ton of fun. So if anyone has any dollars that they want to donate, you can, you can contact, is it Yangtso? Am I, all right? And it's Y-A-N-G-T-180@IST.org. Did I get that right? All right. So if anyone has anything to offer and to add, please feel free to send your information to that email address. It's a lot of fun. So it's a great cause and thank the students for coming this evening and sharing their time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold on, just a clarification. I think of the date you said wrong. Is it May 19th and the 20th? Someone might have heard it incorrect.
Yeah, I've got Friday, May 4th. Did I, is your flyer correct or is this one? Yeah, May 4th. So it looks like.
So on there it's incorrect.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's two times.
We'll straighten that out.
Yeah. Well, you can give twice, so.
All right. So everyone who heard that, it is May 4th, okay? All right, moving on. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. We welcome Melissa Rebel, School and Community Engagement Coordinator at Kennedy High School, to introduce our friend for this evening, Cedar Valley Church.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, and executives of the district. As Don said, my name is Melissa Rebel and I work at Kennedy High School. Most of you are aware that at Kennedy High School, we have students and families that are economically vulnerable. We have families that can afford all of it, we have families that can afford some of it, and we have families that can afford none of it. What's it? It is all that it takes. It's hygiene items, it's school supplies, it's graphic, graphing calculators, tennis shoes, FIAE shirt, coats, blankets, food, transportation, and the list goes on and on and on. Several years ago, I started an outreach called The Pantry at Kennedy High School. That has now become part of what we call the Kennedy Community Alliance. Our mission is to eliminate financial barriers that impact students' academic, extracurricular, and social success that is vital to the overall quality and success of a JFK student experience. Over the years, we have been supported by a number of fraternal organizations and groups in the community, along with businesses. I've also reached out to various faith communities or churches in the community. In December, Parker Dickerson from Cedar Valley Church, he's the youth pastor there, and one of his associates, Heidi Roush, came to visit John F. Kennedy High School. They wanted to learn more about The Pantry and some of the outreach that we're doing there. At that meeting, Parker and Heidi presented me with a check for $10,000. To say we are grateful is an understatement. And I know anyone who knows me is going to find this unusual, but it's hard for me to even find the words to show my appreciation to this organization. In January, Principal Camper and I met with Cedar Valley's board and we shared stories about what we do at Kennedy High School to help our economically vulnerable students and families, and we shared our gratitude. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Parker Dickerson to say a few words from Cedar Valley.
Parker?
Superintendent, Chairman of the Board, it is an honor for me to be here tonight to speak on behalf of Cedar Valley Church. One of the things that I believe that we hold to is out of Book of James, Chapter 1, verse 27, it says, "Real religion, the kind that passes muster before God the Father, is this: to reach out to the homeless and loveless in their plight and guard against corruption." We have, our desire at Cedar Valley Church is to be a place, a safe place. For our youth ministry, we say we want this to be a place where students can belong. When they walk through the door, regardless of creed, culture, race, or anything else, they walk in and find a family, find a place that we say, "Come as you are, find hope and make a difference." And we believe in this community. We're here intentionally and we want to do what we can to serve this community. And so our board got together, they talked, and they prayed, and they said, "How can we make the biggest impact?" And we had heard about The Pantry and from Melissa, and we just said, "We want to do something that says, so we're here." There were no strings attached, and still are no strings attached. We've come with, just with this idea, we just want to serve. We want to help make Bloomington and make this area a safe place for students. We want them to find, to find hope. And we want to do what we can to be a part of making a difference and changing the trajectory and the destiny of students in the future. So it is our honor to be able to partner with Bloomington schools. It's our honor to be in this community, and we just thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of what's happening. And we look forward to partnering with you further in the future. Thank you.
Do we have any students here for a government class this evening? Okay. And just a minute, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium then also, okay? But just a minute. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So now if you would come forward and if you will give your name, your school, and the name of your teacher. And then at the close or one hour, you can leave, but you need to get a signature and you can get those from the people over here against the wall. Okay?
Hi, my name is Aiden Aldry. I am a senior at Jefferson High School and my teacher is Dan Sterling.
Okay. Student board representatives, which would, do either of you have a preference? Who goes first?
I can go first.
So Jackson and I have not been able to make the last few meetings, so I'd first like to say Happy New Year. Here at Kennedy, we've made 2018 a very successful year with our Science Olympiad team, ringing in six first-place medals, two second-place medals, and eight third-place medals. In the past couple of months, a lot has happened. We've had nine students win awards at the Minnesota Scholastic Art Competition and 18 total entries. And in the Korea Olympics, we had our very own Ryan Stoa play hockey for Team USA. And our show choir has represented Kennedy well with placing in the top three at every single competition. And we have named this year's Excel Award winners, which are Ulysses Perez Perez and Olivia Morales. I got the chance to attend the Super Kids, Super Sharing, Super Bowl event, which was a great experience filled with students from all over the state coming together to bring in donated goods for kids across Minnesota. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of football activities for the kids to do. And in total, there was over 40,000 donated goods that are going to kids who need them. And at Kennedy, we just had our Sadie's Hawkins Dance, and I've heard a lot of great feedback from the dance. It was extremely successful for student government, and we sold over 400 tickets. I think it was actually closer to 500. And finally, with the trimester coming to an end, teachers and students are working hard to prepare for finals and getting last little bits of work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scopagen.
My name is Jessica. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School. And since the last meeting, Jefferson has been pushing their foot on the gas pedal to get ready for the finals that are coming near the end of trimester two. Winter is hopefully coming to an end, so that means winter sports will too. Both boys and girls hockey have some, have come to a close with boys losing on a tight game in the first round of sections. And for the girls hockey, Jefferson announced Rachel Graff, respectively as this year's Athena Award winner. Graff participates in hockey and lacrosse at Jefferson. And for boys swimming, they finished seventh in sections. And the basketball season for boys continues with the playoffs just around the corner. On a happy note, the Jefferson High School competition cheer team earned a national championship title in the large game day division at the 2018 UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando. This is their third national championship since 2013. Jefferson High School's Science Olympiad team had advanced to the Minnesota Science Olympiad competition after placing among the top eight teams at the regional level. And the Wind Assemble Band will be traveling to Ireland at the end of the month to perform. Me personally, as a junior, I participated in Career Day last week where speakers would come in from, talking about different career paths from accounting to marketing and advertising. And lastly, in today's board student advisory committee, we are committed to having a dodgeball tournament in May or so. Details are still waiting to come. In conclusion, I hope that all students are able to end the try on a good note by succeeding in their finals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Domagola. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the school board on item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see none, so, all right, I need to move on to motion for Part A. So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the Part A agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, moving on to Part B. Someone like to read the first resolution?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Burkes, sir.
Be resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 accepts the resolution of concurrence by the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for the 2017-2018 school year.
Second. All right, Mr. Kubus. Please introduce your guests, too.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I have with me Anita Eckert from the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. As you mentioned in your resolution, they have concurred with the resolution. It's part of the state statute every year that we have this committee's concurrence on that. And so I'll turn it over just for a couple of words about, to Anita, about how you think things are going and why you chose to concur.
Based on our meeting last month with Andy, and we saw the numbers for the test scores, we just feel that everything is moving in a great direction. You know, a few years ago, we were not doing so well, but as of now, it's improving. So that's why we concurd.
I might add, I think we have a strong relationship with our parent committee. Like Anita was just talking about, get to go and show our results and talk about things that we want to accomplish. Last year, there were a couple of recommendations that the parent committee wanted us to follow through, and we did that. So we have a great working relationship and we're excited about continuing that work.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
So right off that recommendation, I know last year you guys had some recommendations for us, and we did most we could, like the Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we started doing. So I'm wondering if you guys have any recommendations this year?
We did not have any this year. Yeah.
So that means we're doing something right.
Yes.
I always love hearing you guys' recommendations, and so if you guys ever have anything, feel free to email us and we'll try to, you know, do the best we can.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks.
I just wanted to, are there any other questions? Okay. Mr. Burkes, sir.
First of all, I want to echo Director Bennett's sentiment. It's nice to hear from you, and I hope that you don't think that this one time a year is the only time you can contact us or that you can share thoughts. And also, congratulations on accepting the position of the chair. There's a lot of responsibility there. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the parents. You know, all parents are busy, so, you know, it's nice that parents step up and serve on the committee and especially that you're serving as the chair. And thank you for that because we all know that school is a partnership, and without parent involvement, we wouldn't have much success at school either. So, and thank you, Mr. Kubus, for your work on this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. All right, all in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Sorry.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Next Technologies for Learning, an update on our flexible learning spaces. Mr. Weiser.
Hello.
You have a whole team to introduce, too.
While Ms. Bunco brings up the slides, I'll introduce everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. We're here tonight, I have a couple of guests here tonight. With us is our Digital Learning Coordinator, Karen Qualley, as well as principals from Jefferson and Kennedy High School. We're here to give you an overall update on flexible learning spaces across the district, but then to tell a little bit about the big, the biggest two projects that are being implemented this year at the two high schools. Deb, I'm going to help you out here.
Yeah, thank you.
Technical guy here, he can, should be able to figure it out.
As a little bit of grounding, this slide is from our visit from May of this year where we previewed our next phase of Next Technologies for Learning. We talked at that time about doing a couple of things on the instructional front in terms of flex learning, helping teachers stretch the boundaries of time and place in their instruction, as well as developing a foundation for online learning. Those two efforts are continuing on. And then structurally, we talked about some flexible spaces. And so that's, that's the focus of our presentation tonight. So why are flexible spaces important to us in Bloomington? Well, like they say, form follows function. And as these instructional practices have been changing for our staff, as teachers have been expanding what they do in the classroom, lowering the barriers to learning outside of the, of school day, we've, it compels us to look at some of those spaces, some of those environments in which learning takes place, including the classroom spaces as well as the common spaces. Up to this point, and over the last three years, including this year, we've done work in 10 of our 15 media centers in collaboration with the Education Found work in ten of our fifteen media centers in collaboration with the Education Foundation of Bloomington. Uh, we've filled two hundred and fifty, more than two hundred and fifty classroom mini grants. Um, we've been involved with Rod's team, Director Ziskovich's team, in seven construction projects, uh, and, uh, for a grand total of about thirty-five of those, uh, common flexible spaces across the district. So we've done a lot of work, and there's still a lot of work to do. The two highlights, the film in the, or the little picture on the top there under that thirty-five, that's Jefferson's space, uh, but we're gonna start with Kennedy. And so I, we have Carol Campa here, principal from Kennedy High School, and Jason Anderson from Jefferson. Uh, we've asked them to tell, not to give you too much details, we have some data in the slides about what students have said about how they're using these spaces, but to tell us more about what they've noticed as the implementation has taken place, and then how these spaces fit the larger vision for Jefferson and Kennedy.
Thanks. Um, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, at Kennedy, we believe that all of our students are gonna reach their fullest potential and use that potential to find their career pathway. And what the Flex Space has done is really opened up a number of opportunities for students to learn. As we know, today's teenagers learn in a variety of ways. Some of them like it loud, some of them like it quiet, some of them like to look at work in partners, some in groups, and the Flex Space has been amazing in terms of how it's opened up a lot of opportunities for our students. Moving them outside the traditional classroom into the, uh, the Flex Space has just enhanced the learning. I walk around and sit down by kids and talk with the students, and you'll see in the quotes, I guess I have, um, that students are embracing learning, they are helping each other, um, they're working more as a community, um, and that's really important to us as a, as a school. Our students were surveyed as they've been using the Flex Space, and fifty-nine percent they are working on individual assignments, fifteen point two are using it as a quiet place to learn, and seventy percent are using the resource in the media center. We've got our Flex Space on third floor, and then the media center has Flex Space in that. We're real excited about adding a Flex Space next year, hopefully in our cafeteria. Our Flex Space, like I said, is worked, used for groups and individual work, but one of the things that also we have found is, we have two teachers, uh, sixth hour, that both teach Algebra II, and they have been working collaboratively in the Flex Space. And, um, the students are asking for it as much as they can. Can we work with the other class today? And the teachers are doing amazing work, and we've had the most success, um, in Algebra II that we've had in a number of years. Looking at data, we, more kids earned credit in Algebra II this past trimester than the last preceding three years. So that's amazing. So teachers are finding ways to use it to enhance learning. Um, so just, we're really pleased. And just a couple of quotes from some of our students. Um, again, they like sitting down. Um, lots of students, when they have a break from Normandale, um, or they go to the U and they may be on vacation or have a day off when we don't, that you can find them in our Flex Spaces working on their schoolwork. Um, obviously, with the school load of AP classes, oftentimes you'll see students working on that level of coursework. Students find it comfortable. Students saying, I don't feel imprisoned, and it makes, uh, getting work done easy. Um, and that's great to hear. So, is there any questions for Kennedy?
You just have the third floor and the media center.
Yep.
Now, but there's expansion going. Um, is the school open after hours for Flex Space use too, or is it just during the school day?
We have it open till about three thirty. I mean, no, I know that, go ahead.
I can, I can. So, student government meets in the Flex Space every Thursday, um, after school, and, uh, I would like to reiterate how amazing the Flex Space is. This year is probably by far one of the most successful student government ran years, and, um, we're doing a lot in, within the school, and I think that a lot of it can contribute to how we have utilized the Flex Space to get a lot of our work done, instead of just a small classroom.
Are you done? So, just a quick question. I was looking at the picture there, and it had a, one of the tiles was blue, but it was, looked like it was a Jefferson blue. Couldn't get a Kennedy blue?
That would be John's.
Come on, John.
There are some chairs, oh, as well.
Chairfish was too, yeah.
But anyway, that was my only observation.
We are one Bloomington.
Yes.
We are one Bloomington. Thank you for saying it. That's the Jefferson spirit with whoever.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, uh, board. Um, it's, it was about a year ago where I and, uh, my former colleague, Principal Beaton, was here presenting on what our plan was along with John, um, for the Flex Space, and now we are here a year later, ready to report some of our early results. Um, it's been very, very, it's been an exciting process. There's been certainly ups and there's been downs, there's been a learning curve, but I'm very happy to report to you that we are having resounding successes, both in the management of our systems, but also how we talk about education at Jefferson. I like John's quote earlier about form follows function. Uh, we have this amazing space, which we, we dub as the commons. Um, while Kennedy designed theirs and what suited them, we designed ours and what suited us. So if you've not been to Jefferson recently, and I'll get off this Kennedy slide here, um, let's go. Uh, if you've not been at Jefferson in a while, we wrapped our media center around two large thoroughfares, um, to, to mimic a, a, you know, a college campus commons feel. Uh, students use it, um, every period before school, after school, teachers use it for a variety of functions. But what we found has been that teachers and students are really being creative of what it means to be a learner, what it means to experience the classroom environment. Uh, teachers will use it instead of getting a sub, and it provides them professional development opportunities that didn't previously exist. Teachers will use it to, to have half their class work on an assignment and have another half in their classroom working on small group activities. That's super powerful that they would not otherwise have been able to. Um, student groups meet there. Um, students use that space for, for tutoring and for small work, uh, small group instruction. Um, based on our design and our expansion, uh, hopes and plans, we know that we are gonna continue having really creative conversations about what it means to be, um, a student and educator at Jefferson. A lot of our experiences are very similar to Carol's, which is students are finding a, a space that works for them, whether it's a small group where they need to talk, or maybe the classroom that wouldn't work for it, whether that is project management with some of our high-top tables, um, whether it's quiet space, because we know students need quiet space as well. We have, um, places for all that, um, including our media center, which we, uh, include as part of our commons and our, part of our flexible learning. That whole package has really transformed Jefferson, and that area is definitely the hub of our school and has provided so many conversations and jumping off points for, for Jefferson in 2018 and beyond. Uh, some of our statistics, you know, they definitely mirror, uh, Kennedy's, which is many students are working on individual tasks, whether it's tasks from the classroom, um, tasks from another classroom. You know, the possibilities to work, um, and learn beyond that fifty minutes in class is really what this is about, and it's been a resounding success. We have lots of classrooms using our whole space. Because of the way it's set up, we can have two or three, or sometimes even four classrooms all in that space at once. And we've worked on how we manage it, and it's really coming a long ways, um, in, in managing that space nicely. Uh, and then we do have some spaces designed for quiet study, you know, no talking, no music, no, you know, nothing that could be distracting, because we know some students prefer that as well. Uh, as we talk with students, we survey them, you know, we, we walk through them. The nice thing about how ours is set up is that they're in our main thoroughfare, so there's always adults walking through, checking on kids. Uh, so while there might not be a teacher directly supervising, there's always an adult nearby keeping an eye on, on, on those students. So students say they enjoy the freedom, they like the idea that they can manage their own pace, their own assignments, their own tasks. They are in charge of that learning, and we know that students need to have more and more experiences like that as they move into, uh, college. Oh, that's all of my quotes. I didn't get many quotes. Okay. Oh, Karen. So that's, that's been the experience. I'm, I'm very excited about our progress thus far. I'm very happy to come back next year at this time and report to you, you know, even further. Questions about Jefferson?
Now, Jefferson, how do you manage the space there with, for snacks and wrappers and miscellaneous things that the students might eat?
Yes.
Is there a cleanup whistle that all of a sudden blows to that says, okay, pick up all your stuff around here and, and?
We, we, so these are, you know, things that we learned along the way. One of them around, uh, November was the tabletops would get messy, whether it was some drinks or just people. So we, we bought and installed a couple wipe, uh, wipes, uh, things that we drilled onto the walls and says, please clean up after yourself. We had a couple of those sort of conversations about how students can help manage it themselves. One of the things is, uh, historically, students were able to eat, eat lunch in one part of our commons, um, so that, there is mess. Uh, with the lunch redesign, we're gonna probably remove that option, but offer, uh, you know, a better option for that. But we do have some cleaning that, that's an uptake. I've, I've taken off the suit coat a couple of times and gotten a spray bottle and a towel and so.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Um, from the fifty-two percent working on individual assignment, is that also online? Is that taken from online students who are working in the?
I think that would definitely include students working individually on a class assignment, online, PSEO. I think that is that whole thing. They're not working with a group, or they're not working with a teacher. They're working on an individual task, whether it's that classes task, or an online task, or, um, a PSEO task. Um, yes, I would think would include all of those things.
Is that just taken from, uh, the check-in of checking into Flex Spaces and taking that online survey? That's the data from here?
Correct. Check-ins and the surveys. Yep.
Madam Chair, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate the, the input. So you're telling me all I need is, is a, a can of wipes and, and a little elbow grease, and, and our sons will clean their rooms, and everything will be wonderful, and just, I'm just wondering how you get high school students, we have two of them at home, to do any cleaning at all?
There's, uh, there's been a lot of modeling, so, uh, we bought a vacuum, and we'll be vacuuming, we'll be wiping. Um, but then there's just, a lot of the conversations that we have, our staff, who are great, they see a kid moving furniture, they see a kid open up a bag of chips, make sure you clean it up when you're done. And it's definitely not perfect, and some days are, there's more crumbs on the floor than others, but by and large, the, the space, the furniture, the carpet, um, atmosphere is held up very nicely.
So, on a, on a, a little bit more serious note, um, you had comments from the, the students. I'm curious to know, what does the staff think? Um, and Carol, if you want to chime in too, how, how is it being, um, accepted or responded to by the, by the staff?
Um, I think the staff are very excited about it. They've been using it a lot. We, as I said, you know, Algebra II teachers are using it frequently. Um, I was just was working with, uh, Mr. Legrand, our language arts teacher, and he's using it in a different, um, way, keeping some struggling learners with him, and the students that have already mastered the standards, he's having them work in the Flex Space, and so we're trying that to see if that, um, that helps the struggling learners get to the standard, um, successfully. Um, it's been, it's been great. You know, other than the first day when they saw the color of the furniture a little Jefferson-y, they had a moment of pause. Um, but we pushed right through that, and, and people have been really excited about it. So we're excited about its growth.
You know, Jefferson, it's a big change. It's a very in-your-face change. So, there's a whole range. There's been a range of experiences. Uh, most staff are very excited to try some new things, and that's what we, as the administrators, have encouraged them to do, just try some things. We're not gonna force you, we're not gonna push you, uh, but try something different. Um, and most staff that have done that have had a very valuable experience. And, and we've shared with each other, teachers have shared with each other, uh, their learning curves with their own students in their own classrooms of what, you know, what are some strategies that work well, um, and some that, that haven't worked out so well. And that's how we learn as a, as a community, so.
Great, thanks. I, I've visited both campuses and seen, um, how they're distributed, and every time I go, there, there's somebody using them, and, I mean, they, they're not avoiding them.
No.
I like the taller chairs. Um, just, I fit in them a little bit better, but, yeah. And, and I didn't mind, Carol, that when I was on campus at, at Kennedy, that it was maybe not dark enough blue, so.
So this is, I got a question for both the, the high schools. Um, so now that you have these Flex Spaces, do you think that you have enough Flex Spaces? I mean, is it kind of like a waiting list to be able to use these, or is it a good balance, just to hear from both you guys?
You know, I wasn't part of the planning last year, 'cause Principal Beaton was here. But I'm excited about, um, we're taking out the wall in the media center, and we're moving it back and putting a glass wall in, so we're gonna have a little bit of a Flex Space outside of our media center. You know, our school's built quite differently than Jefferson, um, but we're excited about that. So students who are waiting for the media center to open in the morning can have at least a space where they can begin working before that other space opens up. And the plan is to have some more flex furniture in the meat, in the cafeteria, and so that kind of doubles the Flex Space when lunch isn't occurring. Um, we're excited about that as well, so.
You know, at Jefferson, it depends on use. Uh, there are times when it's definitely a nice flow, but we have found if there are three full classes who have, who are using that space, that's about a tipping point. So I, you know, I would definitely be open to, to some, to some more facilities.
Phase two.
Yeah, phase two. Phase two, and then.
Which is, uh, which moves nicely into our final slide, which is, uh, to show you the timeline, um, from the beginning of the project to today. Uh, we started at Washburn Elementary with a small pilot within their media center and a couple of their classrooms, um, received feedback, tried out a few concepts, and decided to, uh, springboard an effort to try it in a few more places, and, uh, check our feedback and iterate as we begin to design. So that included, uh, a few more of our elementary schools, some opportunities, which the ones we're seeing implemented this fall at the high schools, and, uh, a few smaller areas within BCCA in choice. Um, now, in this year, we're planning to, again, increase and expand that access so that we can give opportunities to our other schools and our other programs in the district. And so, that's happened through multiple venues. Uh, the mini, the mini class, or the mini grants in the classrooms are for teachers to apply for a small set of furnishings that they might use, uh, within their classroom. And then the Flex Spaces, again, which are without, outside of the media center, outside of the classroom. Uh, as we expand that access, we're, uh, looking towards sustainability. We're looking to pilot a couple of model classrooms at both high schools where we would offer, um, I, I don't know how many applicants you've had, but.
I got five in one day.
Five in one day. Uh, the opportunity to classroom teachers to try, uh, a Package A or a Package B, collect their feedback about what they would like about a complete classroom makeover. And, um, to do that, we're just beginning those planning phases and looking forward to that feedback, but really looking towards something, uh, that's a little more sustainable than springboarding small projects, but offering buildings opportunity to make choices for how they'd like to see the growth of Flex Spaces within their sites. And with that, um, any other questions?
Financially now, are we still within our goals of the tech referendum, and how is that scheduled?
Yeah, so resource management is one of the strategic directions of the board, and so where we can, a lot of what you see is piggybacking on or working on, uh, collaboration. So with alt facilities projects, we try to take advantage of doing projects at that, at those points. Um, I've, I've said to more than one principal, the, the days of us buying a, a four-poster desk, we bought our last four-post desk, uh, a while ago. So we have capital money that we use to, to do that furniture replacement. We're, it's largely a repurposing of those funds. Uh, within our realm of technology, um, where this, where these spaces overlap with integration, you know, as we've, as we've moved to one-to-one, we've been able to augment some of the, those resources. And, and our attempt, as Karen had said, in this, this is our planning year, or our planning season for next year, is to, is to systemize that, systematize that so that, uh, it's not just a one-and-done project, because, um, as you noted, uh, we get, every time we put out a call for what would you like to do, what is the next thing, we get an overwhelming response from our staff, from teachers who, who are interested, who are changing their instructional practices and need some different spaces to do it. One of Carol's main organizers, uh, Kevin Nelson, when we were over visiting and touring his spaces, he was, uh, kind of ballparking that the spaces are about seventy-five percent capacity, the, the existing spaces they have, uh, and he's had about twenty-five percent of his staff using them. So, kind of gives you a gauge of, like, we are on an up, uphill climb in terms of, uh, the potential of, of what these schools can look like and what classrooms can look like, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, is there a motion for the resolution of, from the Minnesota Department of Human Rights Agreement?
It resolves that the School Board of Independent School 271 approves the attached agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and authorizes its chair and superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the school district.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Stegoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. Uh, we've had a couple of discussions with the board about this over, uh, the last couple of months. Minnesota Department of Human Rights reached out to a number of districts this fall, uh, looking to, uh, work together to improve student behavior supports and discipline outcomes for students. So we've been having those discussions in the district, uh, working back with the department, and, uh, just recently, uh, reached, uh, discipline plan, uh, behavior support plan, an agreement that we're all in favor of moving forward with, and, um, so I'm here tonight to recommend approval of that agreement with the Department of Human Human Rights.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
Want to point out that you will be the first district to sign an agreement with the department. Other districts are stonewalling, maybe, would be the proper term, hoping for a change in administration where they won't have to sign an agreement. So just be sure this is something you want to do and understand that you might be the outlier, or you might be the first in a good, in a good project.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bennett?
I think it's a good thing that we're taking this opportunity and that we're seeing that there's some error or some problem areas that we can improve upon. And instead of stonewalling, as you're saying, we're actually being proactive and trying to make those changes before we're forced to make those changes, is what I think.
Quite an overwhelming seven pages. And one of the interesting aspects is they're going to create a diversion committee during this 2017-18 school year, you know, which will take us till June. Now, having this be just us, is this a template that other districts are going to use? Is the MDH are going to say, hey, here's what you can do, you know, just sign the same thing? And then, you know, pretty much they'll put their own words in it or whatever it is. But at the same time, as we go forward, the diversion committee, I had to read it a couple of times, thinking, diversion, does that really mean diverting? Or is it diversity? Or what is the actual nature of it? And it's intended to be a space in which school districts and charter schools can network and share their best practices. And then it'll be a representative or two from each of the districts. That's quite a agreement, or that's quite a structure to deal with or to do with, you know, and how much pressure is that going to be put on us for, okay, hey, you said this, you're going to do this and go through all of that? So it's kind of curious as to, you know, the legality. Like you say, are we going to be out there on a limb or is it going to be the roots of a growing tree? Well, even if you are out there on a limb, it might be something good. I mean, I think you should be proud of the district and the superintendent for actually crafting this agreement and arrangement because what the department wanted was something totally different than this. And he's come up with, and the district, Eric, has come up with some really good, a really good plan. All I wanted to point out was that you might be the only ones who sign it, but that's, and I do think the department intends to use this as a template for everybody else who comes along.
I just want, I want to ask if Mr. Melby has anything to add to Mr. Sorm's question before we move on to another one?
I think David Holman did an excellent job answering the question. We're proud of our work. We think it's the right work to do, as Director Bennett pointed out and others. And I'm not, we've had enough discussions with them that the committee you're referencing. I don't have any concerns about participating with or taking part in that. And as Mr. Holman pointed out, our plan is well-regarded over there and I'm sure that other districts are going to be looking at what we did.
Okay, Mr. Bergstrom.
Yes. Well, first of all, I want to echo David's sentiment and say thank you once again to the district through the superintendent. What I read was a measured response and not a reaction. And the two are spelled differently and they're not even on the same page in the dictionary, at least the one that I read. There's 20 separate items here and I think we can, we can just assume that those, the rest of the state will be watching. And they'll see, you know, how this works. It took a lot of time, energy and effort. And, you know, I applaud the superintendent for his efforts to craft this and put it together. And I know he took a team approach, so there are others in the district that can share some of that applaud, but we'll give it to Les and he can pat some backs on the way. But I appreciate the energy and effort that went into this.
Thank you, Director Bergstrom. Yep, definitely. And we did have a team led by Principal Megan Wilrich from Valley View Middle School. And I see Wendy Marchak's in the crowd tonight. She served on that committee as well as a number of other teachers and administrators to help craft the ultimate plan. So thanks for acknowledging that.
Director Gorman, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to echo other members' words and want to thank the administration for taking the lead on this. And also for us, you know, the school board, this is a big responsibility for us as a school district. And it's important that we are also setting that kind of example for our students, that you don't just react in a defensive way, I didn't do anything, or oh my gosh, what I did. No, we're actually admitting that there were some mistakes that were made, that there's things that needed to improve. And, you know, the fact that we are committed to work together and working together means as a whole school community, not the administration here, but also in our, in our schools, in our teachers, our students too. So this is going to be everybody's work. So I appreciate that effort.
Thanks. And we'll be back before the board a few times. We have some reporting requirements that you'll get some more information down the road.
Thank you. I just wanted to also add thank you to the staff and the committee, all their work on this. You know, this has been an issue for me since I sat on the special education and parent advisory for a number of years, so I'm glad to see we're at this place, so thank you. Thank you so much, especially, you know, Superintendent Fujitaki for stepping in at a time when we really needed you to be there to make sure that this was handled in a very smooth way and orderly fashion. Proud of the document as well. Yes.
I couldn't do this without the team supporting this direction that we're taking. Entire team, Eric, Megan, the teachers, everybody's supportive that this is the right thing to do. So we're proud of the plan, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on that note, all in favor of approving the attached agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, please say aye.
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 Say nay. All right, thank you. All right, I think that brings us to board member reports. Anyone like to go first? Mr. Bennett?
I'll go ahead and start. So last week I went to the CCAC meeting, that's a Special Education Community Advisory Committee. And Jennifer gave a really good presentation on the demographics of special ed. And I'm not going to get too into it because she's going to make a presentation for all of us, because that was my first question. The rest of the board would really enjoy seeing all these numbers. So she's going to present probably at an upcoming meeting, either a study session or a school board meeting. But my one big takeaway from that was that we are really busting into seams at early childhood education, which we have a lot more, that's where our big growth is happening at. So that either means we're having more kids that have more special ed needs or we're doing a better job at identifying those needs. Probably a little bit of combination of the two. So it's a good thing when one of our, you know, world's best workforce requirements is to get all kids ready for school by kindergarten. So we're identifying more kids that have special needs before they get to kindergarten so that they can get that early dimension they need. So it was good that we're seeing that. And also today, before this meeting, we had the Student Advisory Council meetings and we both had, we had the middle school that was kind of led by myself and Nellie and Beth. And we had the high school that was led by Jackson and Ethan. And we're kind of spread out in different parts of the library and we're all doing our own thing. And it was, it was nice to see that the high school's kind of on autopilot, that I can just go over there and talk to them real quick and see what they're doing. And they handle their own thing and they're productive and they get a lot of stuff done. So that's, that's good to see. And then for middle school, we had a, we had a good representation. We had about 10 kids. I think we had four from one school and then three from either the other schools. So each school was well represented and we had some guest speakers to talk about our summer programming. So we had Deirdre and Michelle come and talk about what programs we have to offer. And what was interesting, I asked the students if any of them have ever done any summer programs. And this one person raised her hand. And then I'm asking, you know, why haven't you guys done these before? And a lot of them were saying, well, we didn't know that there were any activities for middle school kids. So after hearing all the great programs that they have available for middle school, you know, a lot of them were like, yeah, I'd be interested in that fishing club or that horseback riding camp or these volunteer opportunities. And so, you know, I think we really market towards the younger kids, but sometimes the middle school kids kind of get forgotten. So it was good that they had that opportunity, that they can hear what programs they have and ask questions and hopefully share that with their schools. And also, that's more topics we talked about. Beth had a conversation about what kids are doing after school, what type of after-school programs they have. And we learned that our students are busy and that they are full of activities. And then Nellie, she talked about a community center, because, you know, the community center talk is in the community that, you know, and we wanted to hear from them. Well, do they even know that we have a current community center? Only two of them knew that we have a community center. Only one of them had been to it. And so we wanted to get some ideas. Well, if we were to have a community center, because again, a lot of it's focused on young kids and our seniors, but the high school kids or the teenagers, kind of, there's not much talk towards them about what their needs would be. So we wanted to hear what ideas they would like to see at a community center if the city were to move forward and build one. And then Nellie had a, she took a lot of those ideas, had them write them out so she can share with you guys later. And then we also talked about the school wellness policy. Because, you know, right after Valentine's Day, that was quite controversial in our elementary school. So I wanted to hear, well, what are our mid-schoolers think about it? And so we had a good conversation about that. And we kind of asked, you know, well, a show of hands, are you for this policy or against this policy? And from us, all of them were kind of like, eh, you know, we like the idea of the, you know, healthy opportunities and the physical activity, but they're, you know, the whole getting rid of the sweets, they're kind of mixed on that. But then I asked, well, who here thinks that we should not have the policy at all? And we should just go back to where it was before we had the policy? And no one believed that, so. It's pretty, I would say that's pretty good from what the middle schoolers are thinking, that they kind of mostly like the policy, you know, give about 70% approval rating, I would say. Does that sound about right?
They were not in favor of a place full of candy.
The what?
A place, a school full of candy.
Yeah, one of them made a good comment. She thought, I think it's kind of weird that the kids get, the elementary kids get, you know, recess every day and the middle school, we don't, but they sell sweet snacks at the end of, at the end of lunch. And we don't have an opportunity to go out and run off that extra, the extra sugar. So she didn't think we should be having the sweet snacks at the end of lunch, so.
And one thing to add to the community center before you continue, interesting to see the perspective of the kids of what a community center is, like the library all of a sudden was their community center.
Yeah. Or our activity centers, they would say are our community centers, so. So that's, that was a long report for me, I'm sorry. Moving on.
Anyone else?
I'll go.
Okay.
All right, so I'm not sure how many folks know that in 9/17, our superintendent is retiring in June. And so the board is currently in the process of researching candidates and interviewing candidates and trying to find a candidate to fill John Christensen's shoes when he leaves in June. So that's a, that's a heavy-weighted conversation. And so I thought, I took the opportunity to go a little bit on the light side and I went over to the 9/17 winter program. This is held over at Gideon Pond Elementary just across the river in Burnsville. There were two different plays. First one is Good Night Moon. I'm sure everybody remembers the book, Good Night Moon. And that one was presented entirely in sign language. And there was a student that, there were seven or eight students that had different parts and one student that was narrating. And then there was a teacher who would verbalize what the sign language meant for those of us that aren't fluent in sign language. The second one was Peter Pan. And this one was a little bit older students, they're all elementary. And they spoke with, and I don't remember what they're called, but it's the teaching aid that you wear, it's a microphone you wear around your neck so that you don't have to shout over the, over the, over the noise of a class, as it were. So that was a lot of fun. It's always a good, it's always a good program. Had the opportunity to go to Southwood and read to the preschoolers over there, I got to read If You Give a Moose a Muffin. And of course, after I read that, I was really hungry and I wanted to go get a muffin. It's a lot of fun. Jennifer McIntyre and I were in the, in the morning and I think I saw Maureen and Dawn were in the, reading in the afternoon. Also had an opportunity to attend coffee and conversation. This one was, it's hosted by the MSBA. This one was over at Richfield High School. And it's always interesting to hear our counterparts in greater Minnesota, there were some folks that came from quite a ways away to share. There were 30 people. It was over in Richfield's, Richfield, the board room over there. They cleared all the desks out of the way. There were eight, 10, 12 different topics of conversation. And as always, that meeting runs long. So we had a lot of coffee and a lot of conversation. But it's, it's really interesting to, just to hear what other board members are talking about in their communities. It's, it's easy to sort of feel insulated when you're in the seven-county metro and you think of a long bus ride as 10 or 15 minutes. And when it snows, maybe it's 20 minutes. But greater Minnesota, a long bus ride can be over an hour, easily over an hour. And, and how do they navigate those particular conversations? So that was, that was certainly well worth going. I'll wrap my report up there.
All right, anyone else? Maybe one. Oh, Mr. Sorm.
Yeah, my committee report will deal with the fact that I was gone for two weeks down southeastern United States. And it was a 3,000-mile road trip. I just want to get some sympathy from the group, 3,000-mile road trip that we drove. But it happened right after the Parkland shooting. So while we were down there in Carolinas and Georgia, that was on all the local news and it was in all the papers, the radio shows, that it was really interesting. Everybody was offering solutions on what we should do, let the teachers have weapons and let the, make sure that there's police in there and everything else like that. And I was so proud, we were from Bloomington where we went ahead in 2013, passed a referendum for safe schools, where we knew what we wanted to do. We had a big plan laid out that we were going to make sure all the schools were safe and they were locked at all times. And we had an emergency response, crisis intervention-type plans in effect. And I even had a chance to talk to, I was wearing a Bloomington shirt, and somebody said, where are you from, Bloomington, Illinois or Bloomington, Indiana? And I said, no, no, Bloomington Public Schools. And I said, with all this stuff, I said, we have a pretty good plan that we've done with our schools. And he was there for some conference of some sort. So we started talking a little bit about it. And he sounded pretty excited about it because nobody has a plan like Les and Rick Kaufman's plan was for us, for us here. But it just made me feel really proud that we went and passed this referendum to get the safe schools money that we had put into place for this all. There were people from St. Paul that had called in and talked about, well, we're going to have a police in every school, policemen in every school. And so there were some other discussions, but it was driving my wife crazy because she said, why are you listening to this stuff? Turn on some music or something like that as we're driving. So I said, yes, dear, and we did that. But it was at the same time, it was really important to hear how certain parts of the country don't have all of the proper security measures that we do here. And so we have to be proud of that and toot our horn. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jim. Before I go on to somebody else, I think we should just say on that note that we need to thank the community of Bloomington for supporting that referendum. I was not on the board then, but thank you for supporting that referendum. Okay, so who else has a report here? Somebody else had their hand up? All right, you want to go?
On a snowy Thursday night, I ended up going over to Westwood Elementary for their literacy night. And it was quite well attended for the weather. And so they had games set up in the cafeteria along with, the Penn Lake Library had brought in books that they had used in the summer for their literacy program. And every child went home with a book. And they also had a book swap in which people had donated books. And so they got a book from there. They had what are called B-bots, which are an interesting way of helping these kids to either spell a word or to select a card with a word on it and. to either spell a word or to select a card with a word on it and find that particular picture of that item on a mat and then program these little robot bees to go to that particular word or to go to that particular item. So the kids had a lot of fun. They had an author, actually they were co-authors of a book about a little girl whose dad travels and how she deals with his travels and what she thinks about him. And so it was very unique to have the authors there and then read it to the children, and a lot of fun for those kids. They also had a literacy bingo that I didn't get to do because I was volunteering in another area. But I thought it was well-attended, it was fun to see parents and their children excited about literacy and excited about books that they found. And that to me excites me when I see a kid grab a book and go, Mom, Mom, they said I could have this. And, you know, just the time, you know, they're going to have at home with that book, so. Very encouraging, enjoying my time at Westwood and getting to know the kids, and hopefully I'll be there for a day in a variety of classes in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, this is not a report, but as you know, last week was School Board Recognition Week, so I just want to say thank you, send a big thank you to the schools that took the time to send us a little thank you note from the kids. I think we all received different letters from, I don't know if they were from different schools, but the ones that I had were from Ridgeview, first graders. And one of my favorite ones was this one that I got that said, thank you, School Board, we really love you, please don't go away, we never want you to go away, what would happen if you go away, if there's no school board? So that was very sweet. And that is true, you know, what would happen in our communities if there were no school boards representing our students and our families? And also what would happen if we didn't have supportive communities like the one that we have in Bloomington? So it really is an honor to be able to serve our wonderful community.
All right, anyone else?
I just have a couple of things. As Director Bergstrom said, I did go to Southwood to read last week, which was once again a wonderful experience. I so enjoy reading to the early childhood program, so. And next week, I am excited that I will be going with the Early Childhood Special Ed on a home visit. I think that's the Bertha Two program, so I'm excited to join them. You know, it's coming full circle because being a parent of student with special needs, I had home visits a number of years ago, so it's exciting to now be a board member going on a home visit. I also wanted to thank the students, as Director Corman did. They were in honor of National School Board Recognition and we all had letters in our folder thanking us and covered with hearts and beautiful colors, so I think the school board was definitely feeling the love, so I think that was thanks to the staff and students at Ridgeview Elementary. I don't know if anybody had any other schools, I think that's where they came from, weren't they, in their folder? So thank you, shout out to the staff there for helping their students to put these together and getting them over to us. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fujitake.
Great, thank you. For the public's information, there's a joint school board, city council meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center in the Arlene Bush Boardroom, and it's going to start at 7:00 PM. Second is, administration requests a motion to establish a professional development session for the school board on March 12th at 5:30 in Room 601 in this building. And the topic is educational briefings, and they will be facilitated by Executive Director of Learning Support, Andy Kubes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you. On Saturday night, the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce held a gala. At this gala, they raised funds for two purposes. One was for the Future Leaders Program that provides mentorship and career pathway exploration for our students at both high schools. And the second thing they did was raise monies for scholarship, scholarships for both Kennedy and Jefferson students. So thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for doing that. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other business to come before the board? All right, this meeting is adjourned.